Everybody, we're going to call to order the Tuesday, July 28th Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll accept any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda, and we will extend the opportunity when each item is under consideration for public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing and hearing none, we will go to our meeting minutes from Tuesday, July 21st. Would be a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 21st.
Seconded, any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, we're going to be discussing a little bit about our county relief block grant, or as it's also known, the county relief, or CRBG, and then specifically the business grants for restaurants and bars. We're going to welcome up our coordinator for this grant, Mary Kay Williams, to talk a little bit about that. Good morning, Mary Kay.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to just briefly update you. We are working fast and furiously on this process. We've done a lot of work on this and trying to set the foundational piece for moving forward. We're currently focusing on working with SBDC to help us with the process to receive business, excuse me, restaurant and bar applications first, followed up by small businesses. So we've had a really, really good team, working well together, and I really believe we're moving forward at a great pace. And once we get some of these foundational pieces together, then we'll be able to move forward and get this money out to the county for the people that need it. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Kay. We do want to recognize, we've had some questions from individuals in the community asking us why specifically we've done this first round, specifically to restaurants and bars, and that's due to the governor's targeted mitigation efforts related to bars and restaurants. And shortly, either concurrently or right after this round of first round grants is finished, all businesses, we're going to be opening up a grant application for them. So again, the targeted mitigation efforts is really pushing this. We want to make sure that we're getting assistance to restaurants and bars during this difficult time, but again, right after that, or in conjunction with it, we'll have another round for businesses as well. So just wanted to put that out there. But any discussion work on this at this point? Any comments?
No, I think it's, you know, it's a new process. I think we are kind of walking before we're running, and we're learning as we go, and this is a pretty good opportunity for us to get moving and not only take care of those folks that need it, but also prepare for the other businesses in the future, in the near future, that will also receive help, so.
Okay. Thank you again, Mary Kay. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, we're going to go on to our next item then, which is a presentation saying with the COVID-19 relief fund theme, the CARES Act theme, we're going to welcome up Faith Ryan to discuss the rent relief program that the county was able to be awarded. Faith, we do have the clicker here.
Great.
Would you like to, or you can just kind of do a signal like an advance.
I can click it if you want.
Sure.
I just stand and type my answer. Well, thank you again so much for this opportunity. You couldn't have stated it better about walking before running and trying to put the foundational pieces together, because that's exactly what we've been experiencing and working through here in adult services. So today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the CARES Rent Relief Program, or RRP, is the acronym, if you see that throughout the PowerPoint. And again, I'm Faith Ryan, I'm the Director of Adult Services. So just an overview here, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the program history and funding source, the rental assistance portion, eligibility guidelines, the application process, how to access it and submit it, what makes a complete application, some of the timelines that we have as a department, reporting requirements, obstacles and accomplishments, and then any question, you know, time for questions, and of course, our contact information. So program history and funding source. This is federally funded through the CARES legislation. In Pennsylvania, it's administered by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, or PHFA. This is an entity that we have a long time working relationship with, and they're a great partner. Currently, there's $175 million across Pennsylvania for a rent or homeowner relief, and at least $150 million is available to renters. The program in Center County is well-funded, however, funds are fluid across the state, so it's based on need. So we have a general idea of our allocation, but again, funds can be moved kind of behind the scenes to where the need is, based on county reports. So the rental assistance. The program timeline for this is March 1st, 2020, to December 30th of 2020. New applications cannot be accepted after September 30th, which is really, really critical for the public to know. I will also say, it's not here on the slide, but if we do receive applications after that, we will work with the tenant or landlord to try and find them another similar type of program. Things may also change by that point, too. The maximum amount of rental assistance available per month is $750. That is non-negotiable, that is in the CARES legislation, and as much as PHFA tried to increase that to at least $1,000, there was no budging. So I wanted to make that really clear, that we also can't budge on that either. Participating landlords must accept $750 as the full month's rent payment, even if the tenant's monthly rent exceeds $750. And when they participate, they are attesting that they will not take their client to the magistrate for the balance. That said, when we work with someone that has a rent that's higher than $750, we remind them, and we remind the landlord of this piece, and we also suggest that they make a good faith effort to pay any type of balance to the landlord or property manager. While it's not required, we do understand that both parties are struggling, and we also think it's really good for the relationship moving forward. So the RRP, or the Rent Relief Program, can only assist with rent arrears or back rent. If a household needs assistance with a security deposit or first month's rent, they can be referred to our Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program. Again, our number is 814-355-6768. That program will reopen August 3rd on a Monday at 9:00 a.m. If a household's rent is current, but it's expected that they will need help in the future, they can apply for the Rent Relief Program now, and their eligibility will be reassessed on a monthly basis. And that's really critical, knowing that our applications end, or that we cannot receive any new ones after September 30th. We've had a couple of people that have applied, and they've been current up till July, so we process the application, and we set them aside for August to be contacted again. I also want to note that when people are reassessed, they do not have to resubmit the whole application. It's really going to be a contact from our world to them to just see how things are going. Eligible households can receive up to six months of rental assistance. So again, households must prove their eligibility for each month, and that's what we'll work on with them during the reassessment period. So eligibility guidelines. So to be eligible for the program, the household must show proof that their employment or their income was impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. So the member of the household has become unemployed after March 1st, 2020, due to COVID, or the household is experiencing at least a 30% reduction in income, which could vary, the easy explanation is reduced hours at work. I can't tell you how many scenarios we have seen at this point, and so what we try to do is work with families the best we can to help them, you know, fit into the program as best as possible. And I don't say that in a fraudulent way, I say that in the scenarios are so complicated and so different, that it's just a way for us to think about it when we approach the situation, so that we can best serve people. Households must have a gross annual income that does not exceed 100% of Center County's area median income, and that's adjusted for household size. So real quick, here's a chart. For those of you that are familiar with our traditional programming, you will notice that that is a significant income, like ceiling. So for those of you that cannot see the PowerPoint or on the call, a household size of one, 100% of the AMI is $62,100. So there could be a lot of families out there, let's say that were a size, household size of two, that maybe two people earned $71,000 a year, and one person was furloughed or lost their employment, you know, they could still be eligible, especially for families that may have a higher rent because of their typically higher income. Sure.
If I hear you say it's not what your income was last year, it's what your income is now.
That's how we're looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's even more flexible.
It's pretty flexible. Yeah, and I guess that's the word I want to make sure I use. We're trying to be as flexible as possible. So the application, this is really, really critical, because as you can imagine, and to be fair to our applicants, the instructions aren't always as clear. Sometimes the application components are kind of hidden throughout either the landlord application or the tenant application. So we've provided some further information on how to access it, where to submit it, how to pick, you know, up a print copy. So all components of the RRP application can be accessed at phfa.org/pa-cares. When you go onto that website, you scroll down to the bottom, and you click on rent assistance. There's another option for mortgage assistance. And also, just to reiterate, we don't operate the mortgage assistance portion, so for anybody that's interested, they'll have to go to this website, but we are not the lead, and we can't provide assistance for that. Information can also be found on Center County Government's website, under the Adult Services tab. So we try to keep that pretty up to date as possible with information that we also think is really critical and specific to Center County. For households without access to computers or printers, especially since our libraries are still, for the most part, closed, or have very reduced hours, and a lot of people use the library for that service, we do have print applications available at all the YMCA branches. The reason that they were selected was because they have all of their operating business hours in the early morning to the late evening. They canvass the county well, and they also have a large lobby area or space at the front door, so that there can be a little more anonymity, like when people need to go pick something up. In addition, this is not entirely confirmed yet, because we still have to either, A, get the applications to the particular location, or it's all dependent on where Center County is moving forward, but I also wanted to let you know some of our additional efforts. So the waste markets all throughout Center County have agreed that if we regress to like a yellow or red phase, or there's some type of lockdown, or some sort of reason, like our YMCA branches would close, we know that grocery stores are essential business, they'll always be open. So they will hold print applications for us at their customer service desk. Lycan's Market in Beach Creek, they should be receiving print applications either today or tomorrow. Even though they're technically in Clinton County, they do service quite a number of people in our more rural area of Blanchard and Beach Creek and Center. And it's also important to point out that this program is available in all 67 counties. So if for some reason we get a Clinton County application, we will mail it to the Clinton County Housing Authority. The Snowshoe EMS, their target location for us, that again, is available to have that for the community in that area, and we're also working with the Belfont Library and Sklo Library. All applications can be submitted by mail, and the address is to us, the Center County Government Office of Adult Services, 3500 East College Avenue, Suite 1200, State College, PA. A lot of people have tried to come to deliver the application to our physical location. We are completely closed. We have yellow signs all throughout the doors of the businesses saying this information, but unfortunately, people still go there, and I apologize, so they had to kind of waste their time to do that. They can also be submitted electronically at Adult Services at CenterCountyPA.gov. Again, all this information's also on our website. So what makes a complete application? So the more complete the application, the faster the process goes. This is from hard lessons of learning, that we have figured out what people need to provide, and again, some, in some cases, it's very, very much in a case, by case basis, because like I said, there's some scenarios that are pretty complicated. So the LEES, household certification, or renter application, landlord application, and the landlord property certification are the three main applications that you can get on PHFA's website. If unemployed, we'd really like to see a copy of the unemployment letter. We've been pretty flexible with that, because we know there's such a delay and lag in the unemployment office, and we don't want to hold up someone's assistance. If the unemployment letter has not been received, we note this on the application, or they should, we're also required, which I'll talk about shortly, to run or submit adult names and social security numbers through what I call the PHFA portal, is how I refer to it, but it's where we do all of our reporting, submit all of our documents. They actually run those names and social security numbers against the unemployment office, and we will actually see if somebody's eligible or ineligible for unemployment. So if they don't produce the document, but the portal says they're eligible, then to us, they're eligible. If it's a reduced income situation, we have to have copies of all income documentation from January 2020 to current. So that can either be separation from employer, so like there are a lot of people we have that are not eligible for unemployment, they might have gotten that pandemic relief, but they're not eligible for kind of the general unemployment benefit. But if they tell us that their employer let them go on April 1st, and they have pay subs up to April 1st, then that's 100% reduction in income, if that makes sense. A lot of people have had just a reduction, and that is a lot of income documentation to provide, especially now that we're about to enter August, so that's eight months. A copy of their lease, and then they also have to have owner documentation from the landlord or the property manager. So that can either be, the easiest ones are the most common that we receive, are like a copy of the 2019 taxes, that say, you know, the address of the property that they rent. It could be homeowner's insurance, hazard insurance, sometimes that's a little less invasive for property managers and landlords, or just easier to access. Could also be a sales deed, there's a lot of different options. So timelines. So I will admit to say that these were determined by our office. It's been a little challenging for us to figure out what our timelines are from the funder, not that they haven't answered our question, it's just not something that's really available. So we created a timeline to keep ourselves on track. So receipt of received application. So we tried, within seven to 10 business days, of receiving the application, whether it's electronically or physically in my hands, when I go to the office to pick it up, to notify by email to the tenant or landlord, whoever's the applicant, that we've at least received it. At this point, we've been able to provide applicants with a receipt in less than five business days. For people that are submitting it electronically, it's almost instantly. I say five business days, because I typically go to the office maybe two times a week, and so I try to get that all processed, you know, within the week's time. Processing application, we have 30 days from the time that the application was received to start processing. Again, we've been much quicker about that. I don't have a good timeline for you as to how quickly that's been. We also have 30 days after we have told the applicant that their documentation is missing. If 30 days go on, they're like not responding, they're not giving us what we need, then we're able to deny the application, just simply because we don't have everything we need to make a determination. Reporting requirements. The unemployment eligibility, I talked to you already a little bit about. So by 5:00 p.m. every Thursday, we're required to submit the adult names and social security numbers of every applicant, within a couple of days, so usually over the weekend, by Monday morning, I can see who is determined eligible and who is not. This has been incredibly helpful for families that have not been able to produce information, or have a very unique situation with their unemployment benefit. When it says green and it's eligible, to me, green means go, and you're getting the assistance, and that's, that's a good day. The monthly report, we are expected, or we are required, excuse me, to do a monthly report by the last day, the last business day of every month, up until December. So we have to separate how many landlords applied, how many tenants applied, you know, who are the point people, total amount of CARES funding that was expended, total amount that was sought, number of households that we helped, and the number of landlords that received assistance. So this is where I want to spend a little bit of time here, because I have your attention, and also the community's attention, is the obstacles and accomplishments. So as you can see already, this many slides in, this is not an easy lift, this has been a lot of work in the past three weeks. What's really important to know, and what makes me very proud to say, is that from time of announcement on June 11th, Center County had five business days to identify a lead agency and submit an application to participate. So with the help of the Board of Commissioners approving that, with the help of our department deciding that we were going to be the lead, we got everything submitted, and the program opened July 6th. The Office of Adult Services is responsible for processing applications, identifying missed documents, determining eligibility, and requesting check or direct deposit payment for landlords and property managers. And I'm not sure if I identified this in the presentation, but we are contracting with Service Access Management, or SAM, Inc., to provide the administrative assistance. There is significant funding behind this program. We currently have had, we have added five additional staff from other human service departments to help administer the program, and other traditional rental assistance program. All five were trained within two weeks. It gives me shivers to say how appreciative I am of the people that have stepped up to help me in this incredibly crucial and critical time, and it's also really rewarding to see how we can work together as a human services department, period, no matter where we're coming from. It's also provided a lot of cross-training to all these different people in mental health and drug and alcohol. We created a client database from scratch within the first week of administering the program. We have a Center County-specific fact sheet that we've given to providers and county staff. We've done community outreach, so we've had press releases, of course, come from the Commissioner's Office, Facebook, social media posts from both the Commissioner's Office and our partners, email blasts to department providers and community network. We've identified locations across the county to have print applications available, as we talked about. Just a couple stats I put together last night, so as of today, this morning at least, we've received over 65 applications that I'm at least aware of, within a less than three-week period. We've had 116 housing or rent-related calls. I do not have the number of emails or email correspondence that's been recorded, but I can tell you it's significant and pretty consistent. And then the other thing that we've been kind of working around is that not all landlords and property managers are willing to participate. I usually get that information directly from clients, but a lot of it is concern about the maximum amount of money being $750, or not being able to produce certain documentation. So when that happens, we try to work with the tenants to identify other services, or keep them on our radar for when other programming that we're aware of comes down the pike. Last one is just kind of our current climate, to again, to hit this idea home. So we're working with minimal staff, one full-time person, which is myself at this point, when we usually have three. We have the housing program specialist, that's a vacant position, but it will be filled August 31st, and I have one employee on leave. So again, just to continue to emphasize the teamwork that has happened amongst the human service departments, it's just truly, it's admirable, and I really appreciate it. Just some additional things that have happened all at the same time, as you know, and you're experiencing as well, but we were awarded $341,549 in ESG, or Emergency Solution Grant, CARES dollars, and that will go towards emergency shelter services and homeless prevention programming. We also received $190,000 in CARES HAP, or Housing Assistance Program, which is through our Pennsylvania block grant for housing services. We're expecting $17,745, The Home for Good, that was distributed amongst the COCs or the Continuums of Care. We work with them for our HUD grants, we expect that. And then all 14 programs, state and federally funded, have continued to operate, remain available, and have continued to be staffed, which I'm really proud of. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, be as specific as you like. You know, you can always contact me if you want to ask something privately, but we're available, so. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Very thorough.
You've got a total of $549,294 available?
That's for all those other programs, so it's going to be one heck of a budget revision this year.
Yes. So you can, you can help hundreds of families here in Center County.
So we don't have anything public, or any sort of contract or partnership agreement for the rent relief, simply because of the fluidity, but I will share with you that when the program first came out and I had to apply, one of the questions was how many families can you help? And I said, what's, like, what's roughly the allocation? And I'm thinking, you know, 50,000. $2.3 million, that's double my operating budget, and I almost had a stroke, to be quite honest with you.
That's the funding just for Center County?
Yes.
Oh, so you could help maybe thousands?
511 households.
How many?
511 households have all received six months of assistance. Or some other math we did was that if we typically helped 10 to 12 families a month with rent, is our typical quota, that would give us 250 years of rental assistance, which I will not be around for, I'm sorry to say, but, but in all seriousness, we, we can't commit, and we will not be penalized for not spending $2.3 million, but that's the kind of lift I'm talking about, and we want to help as many people as possible, and help as many people be eligible because of that flexibility, you know, as much as, as much as possible, so.
Do you have 65 families already enrolled and receiving benefits?
We have 65 applications, some have already been denied. We are getting some inquiries from businesses, and so we've been directing them to your department, and if that's not appropriate, please let me know. I know you're kind of in the works with the COVID relief, but this is for residential only, and it's only been one or two of those. Definitely getting applications from the student population, but again, we have to be really flexible, and so we're trying to figure out if the student meets the criteria, but there are a lot of questions arising about cosigners, and parents being laid off, and that being income, and I don't have a response yet from the grantor, and because they're so quick to respond, I think they're trying to figure the answer out as well.
Can you say this is also available for people with mortgages?
This particular program isn't, but there is funding available for homeowners. I don't know the criteria of that, but all the information's on the PHFA website, and I, I'm assuming, because it's such a smaller pot of money, that PHFA must be directly administering it, but don't quote me.
Thank you very much, Faith, for the overview. I think one of the big things we want to just make sure we highlight is how people can apply. And if they give your office a call, ideally, they go to the websites, they do, they do the work, and then they contact you and apply, but we really do want to get relief out as soon as possible, so.
Yep.
We appreciate all the work you're doing, and all the other partners are doing with this, so we appreciate it. Any questions for Faith?
One is just, we've heard some stories out there about these rent, people renting out, that they've been struggling this year, you know, that just, at the moment, they're struggling because of, the tenants are getting COVID relief at the moment, so they're kind of in a middle tough spot as it relates to them, not so much the larger companies, but smaller, smaller folks that are dealing with this. Is there anything that your folks deal with that can help them out as well?
Is your question specifically asking if there's assistance for kind of like the private, or like mom and pop landlords?
Correct.
Correct. Yes, any landlord or property manager can apply. I will say to you that we've had many private mom and pop landlords that have applied, they're very flexible to work with their tenants, they've been great to work with, and as long as they can provide the documentation that we're requesting, and as long as a tenant's eligible, then we should be able to process it. We're also really flexible about payments, so we talked a lot about, excuse me, direct deposit, but we can also do a check.
How many are you seeing roughly in the county that are in that spot, in terms of mom and pops?
I can't give you a very solid and truthful number off the top of my head, but what I can tell you is that the majority of applications that we're seeing, and that have been already processed, are mom and pop. A lot of the holdup with the larger corporations is sometimes they need to work with their legal teams to discuss some of the verbiage that's in the application, specific to the $750 rent max. There are also conglomerates, sometimes the property is owned by an entity in Texas, so getting the ownership documentation, or talking and getting permission to actually be a part of the program is lagged. So while those people are applying, and we encourage them to apply, if they're with a larger property manager, there can be a delay. If for some reason that property manager decides they don't want to participate, we keep the client on our radar, and we can hopefully match them with a program in the future.
How many you said you're receiving, is that county-wide, or is there a limit in terms of, I mean, obviously, State College has a lot of rental properties.
Sure.
I think some would be worried, all the money's going to be going to State. Are you limited in community, how much you can spend?
Nope, it's available for Center County, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis. Like I said, the program is well-funded, so I don't think that there will be a huge issue, at least as of this very moment, with supply of funding to help people. I would say the majority of applications are currently coming from State College, from families that are being really proactive. We want to get the word out there to people that maybe are choosing not to get the assistance because they don't have an eviction notice yet, to please get assistance now, because the second that eviction moratorium lifts, whether it's the end of August, whether the governor extends it to the end of the calendar year, there will come a time when it lifts. Now is the time to get the help that you need, so please don't wait.
And you mentioned with student-related issues, there's still some issues you're researching, is that safe to say?
Yeah, we get, I really feel for a lot of these parents, honestly, whether they're in Center County themselves or another state, they are really struggling to figure out how to maintain this rent payment, how to keep their own credit high, how how to maintain this rent payment, how to keep their own credit high, how to not, you know, bomb their own kid's credit because of the situation. We do have limitations, or maybe times when we just can't find the person eligible, but we do ask a lot of questions to these parents and students to see if there's any possibility to provide help.
And this lasts how long, through the year?
So this is available till the end of the calendar year, but again, new applications, we can't, we can't accept new applications after September 30th, and we can't spend, all spending has to be done by November 30th. So that's a funny timeline, when I just told you goes into the calendar year, but in that instance, we can look at a family and say, if you have an additional, like let's say they only got five months or four months of assistance, we'll automatically approve them for November, or excuse me, December.
And the 750 limit, correct, just to underscore that?
Yeah, there's no, there's no wiggle room there. We will help with 750 or a max of $4,500, which is six months of 750 for one family or one individual. And then, like I said, we always suggest, you know, if you can make a good faith payment, make it. And for some people, it's very possible, if they're receiving unemployment or their hours are reduced, if their balance is $200, that's a very reasonable rent for them right now, whereas 950 isn't. But again, it's not a requirement and they won't, they can't be getting evicted based on that balance.
Even without this program, is your office already getting a lot of calls about people worried about the eviction moratorium when it's lifted?
Yeah, we're definitely really busy, but we've been very, very fortunate with this program that we can triage most people to it since it's currently available, which has actually opened up some space with our rental assistance program. That's a fund that usually, we have $9,800 a month, it usually, you know, 15 minutes to three business days, it's gone. I actually didn't even spend the whole amount this month because I kept it specifically for people that needed a security deposit or some other thing that didn't qualify for this program. We also have Act 137 dollars in our Fair Rental Assistance Program that I've honestly put on hold, and I've squirreled away, so that we can try to utilize it for people that maybe aren't eligible or the circumstances are very unique. So we're trying to be as flexible as possible and help as many people as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Faith, we appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll welcome up Dale at this time to discuss the 911 emergency communications item. Hi, Dale.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm here to ask the board to consider an agreement with Tyler Technologies for a interface module for our computer-rated dispatch. What this will do for us and our EMS services that we dispatch will automatically forward our computer-rated dispatch records to the services records management module. And what this, to end up what this will do is to get the paramedics out from, in front of our computer doing homework, record-keeping, and available for the next call. The interface is a one-time fee of $12,100, and then next August, it picks up with a annual maintenance fee of $3780 per year.
Any questions or feedback on this?
Sounds good, it helps our first responders, so good idea.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Uh, yeah, please, Gary.
Back in March, we were talking about procedures with 911 and communications, when you get a call that might be COVID-related and relating information to emergency responders, is that policy still in place, or have you made some changes?
It is, and we've had six different versions of that policy, starting last spring up until now. Initially, the questioning was geographic-related, have you been to China, have you been in hotspots? Well, over time, that has changed, and now it's every caller, who reports a medical emergency, we ask if someone has the symptoms of COVID. And then we ask them straight out, do you or anyone in your family, have they tested positive for COVID? That's asked for every EMS call currently.
And that's relayed directly to whoever, EMTs, whoever's responding that?
If we get a positive response, we relay that. If there's a negative response, we do not relay that there was a negative response, but the assumption is, and we've heard back from our EMS providers, that they treat every call with the possibility of COVID being in place. So they could tell the dispatcher something erroneous, but when the EMTs get there, they find that perhaps there is COVID. But yeah, we are asking with every call.
Thank you.
Would there be a motion then?
Motion to add the agreement with Tyler Technologies to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded, any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Dale, appreciate it. Okay, for our human service items, we are going to bring in Natalie Corman on the phone here. Good morning, Natalie, how are you?
Good morning, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So I will start with the children and youth contracts that are on the agenda. So contracts number one and two are specific to counseling services that we offer the families that we work with. And all of our contracts for one through 15 are all for the current fiscal year of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. So the first two contracts total $3,500, and our county's share of those contracts are $700. For contracts three through eight, they're all with a variety of childcare centers throughout the county that we contract with to provide childcare services. And so you will see that they run from Belfond to State College to Dipton and, and all throughout. And those contracts total $32,100, with the county's share being $6,420. Contracts nine, 10, and 11 are specific to either foster care services or residential services for our dependent youth that we work with. And so those contracts total $97,200, with the county's share being $19,440. Contracts 12, 13, and 14 are specific to solicitor services that are provided specifically for children and youth offices. So the attorneys that are listed are those that we contract with to provide guidance, support, and obviously in our courts. Those contracts total $53,000, with the county's share being $10,600. And the final contract, 15, is for sign language specialists of Western PA, and that is to make sure that we can provide sign language interpreter services when the need arises with families. That contract total is $600, with the county's share being $120. And all of these are renewables, so they are all with agencies we, or individuals with the attorneys we previously have a working relationship with.
Thank you, Natalie, any questions for Natalie on this? Okay, would there be a motion?
Motion to add children and youth services, items one through 15, to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and we'll head into the grant section.
Sure, so for drug and alcohol, what we are requesting for the Board of Commissioners is to approve today the request for a grant extension with the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And what this is, is specific to our drug court. So as you know, we have been operating that drug court. The grant began in October 2017, and it was scheduled to end September 30, 2020. It was a three-year grant for us. However, we, as most BJA grants can allow you to do, is do an extension. And we are doing what we are calling a no-cost extension, because we have approximately $180,000 in unspent grant funding. And while I know that might seem like a lot of money, really what that is, is individuals that have been provided the opportunity to go through drug court have had Medicaid services. And so their services, whether it's outpatient services or our case management service that we built within drug court, has been able to be billed to Medicaid. And so we've not had to do straight out-of-pocket dollars for those services because of the opportunity to build Medicaid. And so we've had those cost savings over the course of these three years. And all we are proposing to do is extend this grant for an additional year and extend it until September 30 of 2021. So this will allow us to sustain the existing positions that we have. We can cover those treatment costs for those that would not be Medicaid-eligible. We would look at additional drug testing, and the courts are looking, as well as with human services, to bring in a consultant, possibly to evaluate the work of the program. We really want to make sure that, you know, evaluate the effectiveness of the program, which is part of the grant, and obviously finalize that sustainability planning for the long-term maintenance of the program. So by doing this extension, we allow that to occur over the next year through September 30 of 2021.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. And just some feedback on this or question. So you still have $180,000 left, or you've only spent $180,000?
We have $180,000 left.
Okay. So you've only used, a little bit over half of the grant, it was a $400,000 grant?
Yes.
Okay, so we're confident, so is it possible to do another extension after this, or is this the only one we can request?
So I believe at this time, this is the only one we can request. I don't think we can request beyond that year. And so it would just be whether or not we would have a relationship with BJA to be able to extend it again. But at least within the way our agreement's written, we can ask for this one year now.
Okay.
So I'd have to look further if there's any additional, you know, allowances. I just know we can only ask for the one year at this time.
Okay, and I just am doing some quick math, it looks like it's about, we're spending about $75,000 a year, and so if we get another one-year grant, we might still have about $100,000 left in there. But it'd be, I mean, yeah, it doesn't hurt to ask BJA for another year, but once we get this one done, we can always talk about that later.
And again, we have to make sure we have the funding available for the non-M Medicaid people. So, you know, as much as we build primarily Medicaid, if for some reason this year, we would have individuals that do not have Medicaid, we have the funding within the program to cover that. And that's just waiting for us to see, you know, who opts to work in the service.
Understood, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Natalie on this, feedback? Do we know how many folks have graduated from the program, Natalie?
Unfortunately, I wish I could tell you that I know that, and I don't, I'm sorry. I did not get a chance to ask Kathy that before I came on, so.
Not a-
I do not know that it's still running.
Not a worry, not a worry, uh, not a worry. All right, would there be a motion?
Motion to approve the request for a grant extension with the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Seconded. Then moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
So the second grant that we have before you today is our five-year agreement with the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs of the state. And what this is, is this is our comprehensive plan that we sign off every five years that shows the services that we do for substance abuse preventative services. It really follows through our federal funding, it provides support for our state funding, it is prevention services, it is treatment services, case management that we have opted into. And so this agreement outlines all the responsibilities that we of the county take on to ensure that we receive our funding. So fiscal operations, reporting, the services that we offer, the providers that we work with, it all is part of our agreement that we sign off every five years. And so with that, though, is a estimate, you know, of the funding that we will be receiving. And so that funding is $4,046,336. And so it's roughly around eight, a little over $800,000 each fiscal year, when you look at each of the allocations that they provide in the agreement from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025. And so this agreement's, you know, been vetted throughout the state. All counties throughout the Commonwealth are signing this at this point, and this is our opportunity to present that to you for review for next week's consent agenda.
Thank you, Natalie, any questions, feedback for Natalie? Okay, would there be a motion?
Motion to add the agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, at the chair's discretion, we're going to move the letter of support to the next thing we discuss, just so we can not hold up Natalie any longer, so Natalie, we'll turn it back to you.
Sure, so we were reached out for by the Janet Murray Foundation, that they were partnering with the Penn State Arts and Design Research Incubator to apply for a National Endowment for Art grant. And what this is, as they're calling it, is our town, and what they're doing is combining the efforts of theater and the work of the Penn State Theater Department, as well as Janet Murray Foundation and their desire to, you know, really talk about the, the mental health community and to show the resilientcies of, of individuals with significant mental illness and, and recovery. And so it's a really unique opportunity to engage our State College, Penn State, and surrounding Center County communities in an art-based activities that will focus on the resiliency and long-term public and individual health, and obviously making those relationships, as well as mental health providers. And so the National Endowment of Arts grant lists a government entity to partner with, and so they have asked if the specific Center County Mental Health Intellectual Disability Office would be that. We have no grant funding opportunities, no funding will be received to us. They are looking at matching their funding within their own, you know, Penn State and organizational world to do this, and really word is to do that community connection. Obviously, we would probably link it with our community support programs, our providers, individuals, family, and NAMI, all to support and do this. It's also a two-year opportunity, so it starts July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023. So there's still a lot of work, you know, to do before we kind of, if we receive this grant, if Penn State receives the grant, to do. But the grant application is due very soon, and so they were looking for us to provide that support letter that we would be a partner with them on this unique opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Natalie, any feedback, questions for Natalie? Okay.
Sounds great, Janet Murray does, could work.
Okay, super, Natalie, we'll, we'll look for a motion then to approve the letter.
Motion to approve the letter of support.
Seconded. Then moved and seconded, any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, okay. What we're going to do is we're going to go, thank you very much, Natalie, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to our consent agenda, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Seconded. Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, okay. Margaret, anything for Administrator's report today?
Yes, just wanted to remind everyone that we have a work session this afternoon at 1:00 PM to talk further about the county relief block grant. As Mary Kay reported earlier, much has happened, but we do need to continue making, providing you with information so that you can make decisions about future allocations.
Right, it's nice to see she worked over the weekend on it, I really appreciate that.
As, as many of us do.
We will be on our social media platforms, putting up the BlueJeans link if anybody wanted to join in on that conversation. Again, the work session at 1:00, so. Okay, thank you very much, Margaret. We'll turn it to Commissioner Higgins for the check run.
Larger-than-average check run of $2,111,197.23. The checks of the week are to election systems and software, two checks totaling $12,750. I know it seems like everything seems to be happening here all at the same time, and the world's a bit crazy, but we have less than 100 days until the November election. I don't know if I'm stepping on something Steve was going to say, but-
98 days, but who's counting?
98 days, Steve's counting. So it's coming up just around the corner, so appreciate our, our work with that company for all the elections processes they assist us with. So would like to make the motion to approve the check run, dated July 24.
Seconded. Then moved and seconded, any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried and approved, all right. We'll turn it to Commissioner Gresham for the voter registration.
Okay, with that 98-day period marked, we have a total of 108,918 registered voters in Center County. That's 46,048 Democratic registrants, 147 Green Party, 676 Libertarian, 14,572 non-affiliated, non-affiliated voters, and 42,900- non-affiliated voters, and forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one Republican voters, which leaves all others at four thousand five hundred and forty-four registrants. Of those registrant, of those four thousand five hundred and forty-four, I'd like to single out the centrist party here in Center County. The centrist party has one registered voter, and just like to recognize them this morning. And I'd also like to recognize precinct number seventy-eight, which is Spring North, Spring Township North. They voted the Spring Township building on Blanchard Street. In the last election, they had one thousand two hundred and fifty-five registered voters, and five hundred and ninety-three cast ballots, which led a voter turnout percentage of forty-seven point two-five percent, which is pretty solid turnout for any precinct. The folks that make it happen at precinct seventy-eight, the judge of elections is Steve Wheeler, minority inspector is Julie Weaver, the majority inspector is Roberta Harden, very hard-working woman that I've had the pleasure of working with on a variety of different projects, and really appreciate Roberta's continued activity in the community. The clerks are Janet Ortiz, Stephen Zalesnik, Tracy Jackson, and Denise Zalesnik. And again, thank you to the Spring Township supervisors for letting us use their facility for voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any executive sessions to announce or hold?
No executive sessions to report, however, we do need a fourth and an executive session of the following agenda.
Okay, and that would be for-
For legal matters.
Okay, legal matters. Okay, thank you. All right, we have the balance of our public schedule and some election announcements on the agenda there. At this time, we'll take any questions from the press.
The community development block grant, obviously Restaurants &amp; Bars was the big player last week at the top of the list. Any word as to the number, as to how many you could accommodate Restaurants &amp; Bars at this time?
Remains to be determined. I think we would encourage any restaurant or bar that is, has been affected, I think it's universal, to please apply. But we can't, we can't say at this point. It will be, we'll be able to determine that once we see the applicants and the need from the applicants.
Any amount of money you've more narrowed down that you might budget towards them at this point, or is that still, I think, was it, I want to say it was around half, I think, was the approximate. It wasn't the official total given last week. It was a fourteen, something like that, million. It was around seven million that was thrown out there. Is that still the chase?
Sure. So we've talked about anywhere from about two thousand five hundred to seventy-five hundred. So it's, it would be safe to say about five thousand dollars within, again, within that range for restaurants and bars, and then potentially other businesses in a second round. But again, the need, we have to look at the need, see what the needs are. Now, that five thousand is a, what other communities across the state have done, other counties have been using about that metric, so we're keeping it within those guide rails.
You mentioned this earlier, but about how far after the Restaurants &amp; Bars could the rest of the businesses get their turn, so to speak?
Could be concurrent. It could be maybe a week or so afterwards. It could be once the grant application's finished. Again, we want to see what the need is, and we want to make sure that all the mechanics behind the application process are working smoothly.
Because with restaurants and bars, if we eliminate duplicate locations, if we eliminate restaurants that say are owned by large outside corporate entities that have no headquarters in Center County, we're in the ballpark of six hundred or so restaurants and bars. So it's a good fraction of the number of businesses in Center County, but to Commissioner Dershowitz's point earlier, it's going to allow us to walk before we have to run. Because once we open it up to all businesses in Center County, we could see triple, quadruple that number of businesses that could theoretically be able to apply for the grant.
And the timeline for the application, I remember last week you mentioned hopefully late July, late or early August, correct, to have that application out? Is that still the case?
Right. We're working on a draft of that application this afternoon, I believe.
Yeah, we should be working very closely on that. And also, one of the other things that, there's also municipalities, there's the not-for-profits, a lot of other folks in the community, and some of the big entities that are going to need help. So going back to your original question about what that big number is, we're still trying to sift out what the need is and adjust those numbers accordingly.
Thank you.
Michael, have you heard anything else from Department of Health about Sunday's case numbers?
We have not. The request we've made to them is ongoing. If we can get some sort of context on a daily basis about the type of cases we're seeing from them, that would be appreciated, just because we have many different entities that are doing the testing, many entities that are doing the reporting. So that would be helpful as we go forward. But we do know that Mount Nitney is in the process of retesting some of the individuals that were within that, that the results that were brought back that led them to believe that it might be a higher than normal positivity rate, so we're waiting to see. But regardless, we were asking the Department of Health for that on a daily basis, and so we're still waiting for a word back from them.
We're in one of those counties where DOH and the coroner don't even agree on the number of COVID-related deaths. Do you have faith in DOH?
In terms of the, you're talking about the coroners who confirm it?
I mean, it's just one issue. People are saying they're getting confusing numbers. That's one example. We have less than ten deaths here supposedly, but they can't even agree on. So do you, how much faith do you have in Department of Health?
So we have worked with them since this began. I think they've been tremendously helpful. Due to the fact that we do not have a county health department, it makes it very difficult to have very close contact with them on a day-in, day-out basis. But, but in terms of how we're working with them, they are giving us more information as we move forward with this. But yeah, from my standpoint, I do have confidence in them. This is a difficult situation for everybody.
Question for all three, if you want to respond. Sunday's Philadelphia Inquirer linked the article headlined by "Center County is About to Become a Penn State Research Project With Students Coming Back." Thoughts?
Sure. I was quoted in the article. I talked about the need to understand that there is a economic conversation to be had, but there's also a public health conversation to be had. I will say the research that was talked about within the article that's being done, that's what you would expect a world-class university to be doing right now during a pandemic. However, the way it was rolled out in terms of there being a little bit more discussion and a conversation locally about what was going to be happening locally. For example, that was the first time that I had heard that there was going to be an opportunity for our citizens to do antibody tests. Hadn't heard that before, and apparently that's going to be starting later this week. I think that people were concerned about how that was rolled out. There was a Data for Action project that was started way back when. We were supportive of it. Helps us all get an understanding of how our community is approaching the COVID-19 pandemic here in Center County. But I, but I think there were, the way the headline was, was, was written, I think threw a lot of people off. I'd encourage them to read the whole article, take a look at the whole article. Some of the research that's being done, again, Penn State is an amazing research institution and should be doing this research during a pandemic, but I also think that the way it was rolled out was, could have been, could have been done a lot better.
Agree with most of what Mike said. When you have a reporter interviewing infectious disease experts and epidemiologists, they're not always thinking about perhaps the best way to word how they're doing their research for the general public. So yeah, the wording maybe could have been done a little bit better. But we do thankfully have a world-class research university right here in our backyard, and so they're going to be tracking things very closely. As we've been discussing here for weeks, we all need to wear masks, we all need to be socially distancing, especially indoors, and if we have that as a standard way of operating here in Center County, it's more likely that the students will do the same. If the students come to an environment where some people wear masks, some people don't, some people social distance, some people don't, they're going to do whatever they want to do. So everybody, let's wear our masks, let's follow the Center Safe protocols, let's follow the CDC protocols, so that we keep our number of cases reasonable and the students arrive in a community where the expectation is, if you're indoors, you're wearing a mask.
I think the, obviously, the headline was meant to grab attention. I think what really needs to be emphasized is that we do have a world-class research facility here that provides all sorts of services, not only to the community of Center County, but the world. That's the first thing, and I really do appreciate the hard work that goes into some of those research projects. I think to my fellow commissioners' point, we need to be responsible. We need to set a good example and understand that we have forty thousand students that are going to be coming into town that have to also have a measure of responsibility. And it is important for us, absolutely important, that everybody appreciate the fact that we do have some very, very, I guess, untrodden waters ahead of us. And so we need to figure out how we can get through this as simply and as safely as possible. And I don't think there's any doubt in our minds that we can do that, but we have to be responsible. And to Mark's point, you know, if we, if we wear our masks, do the social distancing, and we introduce forty thousand new people, we're going to have some, we're going to have some glitches in that, but it's pretty obvious. But I think we can, it's manageable, it's controllable, and I think the university is the lifeblood of our community, and we need to make sure that they continue to be that lifeblood by allowing them to operate and function as a, as a world-class university. So whatever we can do to help them, and I would, and I would again suggest to my fellow commissioners that we look at some CARES Act funding to help them in that mission and help the community, you know, accept the fact that we're going to have forty thousand new people come in into Center County. But also, that's, that's what makes up the lifeblood and vitality of our, of our region, so. Everybody go with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one question here from the Center Daily Times. Hi, Marley, good morning.
Hi, good morning. So obviously, you've already talked about there are a lot of questions following the past weekend's spike in COVID cases, but I just wanted to ask to follow up on communication between Mount Nitney Health in the county and then the Department of Health in the county when it comes to testing and case numbers. Obviously, with students slated to come back in a few weeks, if something like that were to happen again, would the county like to be notified ahead of time of potential spikes in cases? And just how would you like situations like this to be handled from a county perspective moving forward?
So we've been in regular contact with Mount Nitney ever since the pandemic started. We have been on several calls with their leadership and talk with them throughout major events, minor events, again, throughout the last several months. From the Department of Health standpoint, we appreciate the fact that there's a lot of, the number of cases in the southwest, in the southeast are probably what's on their front burner. But we have, we've made the argument to them that Center County is going to be having an influx of the greatest amount of population in terms of the whole state when it comes to our numbers going from about a hundred and twenty residents to potentially, you know, you know, more than thirty-three percent. It's going to be increased by thirty-three percent. So that should be a, something for their, from their standpoint, to be monitoring and putting some things in place. So we are expressing that to them, encouraging that to them. We're having conversations with them about possible partnerships when it comes to contact tracing. But really, from our standpoint, what we ask the Department of Health to do for us is to do a daily briefing essentially that we could receive and have that, so that we could be aware of, again, certain cases climbing and what that looks like.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay. Any other questions before we, yeah, please, sure?
All three of you talked, it seems as though the benefits of the, of a research institution at Penn State are outweighing the concerns of being guinea pigs with this. Would you say that's a fair assessment?
Well, you have to take, you have to take them two separately. If you, if you read the article, they talk about many different things that they're doing. And I don't know, from my standpoint at least, it's the first time that there's been an encompassing collection of all the research they're doing, the different things they're doing. So some of the research they're doing is in a laboratory. It's, it's in a laboratory, it's with the coronavirus, and they're doing that. That's, that, that should not have really an effect out in the community. But what they talk about doing, again, antibody testing in the community, when they talk about doing follow-up surveys on the community in terms of how people are looking at the virus, those are the kind of things that, again, there should, there needs to be a little bit more collaboration and discussion on. Again, the antibody testing, from my perspective, had a lot of people concerned with that. Many people view anti, see antibodies as, as, you know, somebody tests for an antibody, that means they can go out and do whatever they want, and we have, we have to say that's not the case. We don't know how long the antibodies stay in the system, if reinfection is a possibility. So the last thing we'd want is for people to do antibody testing, feeling like they're invincible now because they had the coronavirus back in March, and now they can go throughout, you know, downtown State College without a mask on. So again, those kind of things, I think that those, those were the issues that we heard from people after they had read that article. But yeah, so again, research should be done, absolutely. That's what we want Penn State to be doing, and that's what they've been doing. But I think it's just the rollout was, was a little clunky.
Right. I guess the heart of my question was the tone of it. Part of it just seemed to indicate that State College in Center County is going to be a quote-unquote "case study," if you will, I guess. And that's, that's what some, we're uncomfortable with.
And I think that was the clickbait, you know, title of the, of the article, but it really, the meat and potatoes is we do have a world-class university that's providing us as a, as a community with, with an incredible amount of research and, and really safety opportunities. And so I think that Penn State has been a fantastic partner in, in so many things in the past, and they will continue to be in the future. And so I would just weigh that with a grain of salt, because I don't believe that there's anything nefarious going on here again. And, you know, Penn State is trying to help us and trying to help the community, at the same time trying to solve a world-class pandemic, so stay tuned.
And there are, there are numerous other communities in Pennsylvania, in the Big Ten, and throughout the nation, where, once the students come back to college or university, the students are going to be twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent of the local population. So Center County is not necessarily unique. It's just, as Steve mentioned, Penn State is involving significant resources in research, in working to fight the pandemic, in understanding where we are today, and then what it could look like once the students are back.
Thank you.
We look then for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session at eleven oh five.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in executive session then. Thank you, everybody.